It is 7:01 and I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. All seven members are here. Good job, class. That's awesome. We have the agenda reviewed, but I do want to make an adjustment to the agenda because we have a community member here tonight who would like to speak to us. As you guys know, we flip-flopped our regular meeting with our work session this month and we didn't change it on one of our calendars. And so, tonight would normally be the meeting that we do public comment and he can't come to the next meeting, he's already here. So, I'm going to just insert that as the next item if you all agree with that. Okay? So, will anybody, any other agenda motions? Well, somebody's got to...
We adopt the now revised agenda based on Jennifer Disney.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we adopt the revised agenda. Hello?
Tom?
Aye.
Owen?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
All right, we will now have our public comment. Do you have a timer?
I've got a timer here, yes.
Okay. So, come on up and we will time you using the standard three-minute rule. And I'll ask you to state your name.
Thank you for accommodating me.
Yeah.
Chair Trager, members of the board, with respect to the required formalities, my name is Heath Curtis. I live with my wife and two daughters at 840 Shiloh Com Drive here in Silverton. My oldest, Anna, is in sixth grade at Silverton Middle School. My youngest, Harper, is in fifth grade at Mark Twain. I'm speaking to the topic of middle school advanced math. I thought I might start with a personal anecdote. I grew up in Joseph, Oregon, and we were really poor. My parents worked a lot for not a lot of money. In many ways, my education was up to me. Nobody at home reviewed my homework, helped me prepare for tests, or helped me with college applications. To the degree I found success, it was because my teachers and my school system saw a great deal of potential in me. They identified a bright kid, set high expectations, helped him accountable to meeting those expectations, and launched me into the universe confident I could be anything I wanted to be. Those teachers truly changed my life. On May 30th, my wife sent to you a letter expressing our concern about loss of the advanced math track in Silver Falls School District. No state policy requires this. We were alarmed and outraged that our school district would be pursuing an educational strategy that other districts like Portland Public Schools and Salem-Kaiser retracted after waves of outrage and alarmed parents pushed back. Personally, I thought back to my life as a sixth grader. I fear that had those teachers not invested in me, including by accelerating my math instruction and giving me extra reading, I'd have floundered on my own. Nobody else was pushing me. Today, I have two bright daughters who love math and will, I think, be excellent examples of what investments in STEM can produce in young girls. Their parents are both lawyers. Our daughters will have the resources they need to advance and to be challenged. But those kids like me when I was young, whose parents are each working two jobs just to keep their kids fed and clothed, and giving them IOUs at Christmas pending the next paycheck, it's those kids you'd be failing by handicapping their instruction. There are diamonds out there with few resources other than those they find at school. With respect, I have to insist that you continue to meet every student where they are individually to challenge them and to launch those rockets into the real world with every bit of force this district can muster. We've since learned that the story at Silver Falls School District is a little more complicated. Evidently, there may be an advanced math cohort that moves through the middle school, but it's not clear to what degree the eighth-grade teachers will be authorized to use Algebra I curricula, and it is not clear whether there will be a path for that cohort to move together into geometry as freshmen. Said, it seems there may be individual exceptions...
Thirty seconds.
...requiring students to advance grades alone or seek independent instruction. This is unacceptable. The advanced math track has been in place for decades. In my opinion, the idea that this district would be promoting equity by handicapping bright students is tragic, wrong. Please continue working to identify those smart young people whose futures as successful mathematicians, scientists, accountants, and yes, even lawyers, depend on your ability to challenge and advance them as fast as their capabilities allow. My hope is that you will continue to endorse Algebra I instruction in eighth grade and that there is a clearly identified path to receiving credit and advancing to geometry as freshmen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
I'll leave my comments with them.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for accommodating that team. We are going to go to discussion items now, and we have members of our bond team here today to present to us. So, you guys can come on up to the table along with Scott. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, board members, and thank you to our three bond advisory committee members. This is a historic day for us in terms of the bond. This is five years' worth of work that's culminated in this point right here. So, you'll hear tonight the bond recommendation that the bond advisory committee has authored. You are all at the, all seven of you were at the last bond advisory committee meeting, which was wonderful. And we'll go over with you in some, we'll do an introduction, then it'll come to me and I'll talk about the community input types of things that we've received in this, and then we'll turn it over to our bond advisory committee members that will walk you through what the recommendation looks like, what we added due to the input that we received from the community, things we took out, things of that nature. So, Patrick Linhardt is here from Wenahaw, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to start us off. And, welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, my name's Patrick Linhardt and I'm a member of the Wenahaw team that's coming through. Anyway, grown up in Silverton. I don't know if I've met all of you. I know some of you by name and even went to school with Tom, for example. So, I'm really happy to be here. And, anyway, it's been fun to be part of this process. And I'm just kind of here to summarize it for you, and then I'll hand it back to Scott after a couple of slides. But participated in terms of the facilitation with the bond advisory committee here and worked through multiple questions and answers and educating the bond advisory committee along the way is kind of one of the processes that we've gone through and gathered a lot of community feedback along the way, which we'll go into a little bit deeper. But, I'm happy to say that we've kind of come to the end of what Wenahaw's role has been here in terms of helping facilitate and handing it back to the bond advisory committee to kind of make their formal recommendation. And we've got three of those members here today, as you can see on the slide, that are going to make that presentation for us. And, did I do the slide? So, part of our process here is up on the screen. We've had quite a few meetings along the way. We've just kind of listed the steps that we've taken, but it is included multiple bond advisory committees up until the end of January where we developed a draft recommendation. And then, various discussions happened and gathering additional community feedback. And we felt like we needed an additional meeting just to kind of make sure that we were accommodating all of that feedback and in an effort to be as transparent as possible and, you know, absorb and listen to everybody's input. And we're now kind of at the final recommendation stage here, end of May, beginning of June. And we feel good about what we've accomplished, and certainly there's a lot to accomplish moving forward, but each stage has its own little step that we have to get through. And right now, it's just kind of this recommendation of where we'd like to be with the bond amount and that sort of thing. So, as we make the final recommendation before the board meeting here, there will be some more steps. I'd like to highlight the point here, the Awesome Grant, as they call it, the OSCIM. That happens on July 15th, and my team informed me that typically we hear on that within about two weeks. And with, just the way things are out in the marketplace right now, there's a smaller pool, so everybody is feeling pretty favorable about our chances with that. And so, that's, I'll say, kind of a bonus to what we've worked towards so far. And this slide here just kind of goes over the members of the team on the bond advisory committee, talks about the school board observers that, and the district team that were non-voting participants, as most of you know. I was told to remember that a lot of you have been participating in the meetings, but there could be some people that are online that aren't as familiar with the process. So, I'm trying to cover all the bases that way, and it's a little odd when you can't see anybody's face, right? Who am I talking to? But, anybody that's online watching, I'm talking to you. And again, you can see the bond advisory committee and then Wenahaw, our three members of the team, and then we've got Bright Public Affairs, and I can never say, "Fatinka", "Fatinken", I think I've said it 15 different ways. Anyway, they're very sharp and they'll be taking over from here. Is that, Scott? I want it back to you.
So, and you've seen this list many times. I just want to thank everybody on that list, not just our bond advisory committee members. We have three here, and Kevin Palmer, and Josh Ward, who's an incoming board member, were also members of the bond advisory committee. But there are also hundreds of others that have given their input, that have planned, that have served on other committees since five years ago, when this started in 2018. I just want to make sure that I mention that there are a lot of individuals to thank, and anything you do in terms of public process takes a long time, and it's all about the process. And I want to make sure that anybody out there that's listening, if they had something to do with this bond over the past five years, thank you, because we're finally here. So, once the third bond advisory committee took place, we had sort of a, we had a bond recommendation draft formed up. And the, the... Let's see here. We had a bond advisory committee draft shaped up, and basically, it broke out into the following numbers that you see above. Of course, you know all of this because you were at the last bond advisory committee meeting, but for the public, the total number was $138 million. We hit that number right on the nose at the end of our last meeting. The bond advisory committee came to terms with a lot of different things they needed to make decisions on. And the way that breaks out is 75 million for a new middle school, keeping the existing gym and the locker rooms because they had the seismic upgrade, and then $63 million investment of what we are calling Warm, Safe, and Dry improvements to every other school in the district. This is a massive financial commitment, and the first time in this district's history that we'll have a bond that will touch each school significantly. And those actions should speak loudly in terms of our commitment to keeping every single one of our schools open for a long time. This presentation will also be posted, so if you're watching this, you'll be able to go through each of the details here that fall under the Warm, Safe, and Dry categories. And after this draft was formed up, we then took it back. We took the baton back from the bond advisory committee, and then my team and I developed what the community feedback process would look like. And that was no easy task. Far and away, we've done more than any other district in Oregon when it comes to seeking community feedback. A lot of times, you only see a couple of community input sessions, even for big districts like Salem and Beaverton. But for Silver Falls, it's really important that folks in Silver Falls have a say. We're in a multi-generational community, and people want to have a say in how their schools look. And so, we had 10 individual listening sessions. As you know, we hired Jerry Colonna to come in and facilitate those as a third party so we could engage with the public as well, and Jerry could handle the technical parts of keeping the discussion going. At each of the 10, we had great representation of our board. We had a couple of you that made it to every single one of the community feedback sessions and had really, really engaging things to say and your support. After, and I counted in rough math, that was 508 individuals that attended those 10 sessions. And so, we're talking about the input just from this process, this two-month process, of 508 individuals. Those are what we had in the attendance sheets, which is significant, in my opinion. We also have a bond website that we referred folks to, and we've received an enormous, just a trove of information there. And we also collected note cards at the end of every single community input session and cataloged those as well. The report is posted on our website, the Tell Us What You Think sessions report. There's an executive summary, and then there's the actual minutes of what took place. So, those two documents for our public to know, if you want to be informed about what that process looked like, you can knock yourself out. It's right on our website, along with the Long Range Facilities Plan and the Tell Us and the Community Feedback Sessions from last year, the K-8 Community Feedback Sessions. So, during that process, some of the themes that came up, so we spent about a month distilling down all the input that we had collected, and then we distilled that into four themes, if you will. And the first one that came out was the communication and transparency, the desire for transparent communication, and what is the bond exactly and what are the intended benefits. And there was a lot of requests for clarification around specific projects. That one was a really difficult one to negotiate because most of those questions around specific projects happen in the design phase. And as a district, we don't have the finances to pay for the design phase before we've passed $138 million bond. So, that one, at least for me as a superintendent, was really challenging to try to explain that piece. But I think it also goes down to, and has to do with how sophisticated our community is and their thirst for knowledge as well. Project prioritization and school-specific requests. There was a concern that the draft recommendation is not enough to cover all identified facilities' work, and that's true. All of the work that's needed for Silver Falls School District is not enough, there's not enough in this bond to do that. We receive scientific polling data to drive our decision-making, and that's the number that we came up with and had to stick with. There's also, there was support for Warm, Safe, and Dry package, but requests for additional projects also came up during these listening sessions, and we'll show you in a little bit what got added and what got taken out because of that. The cost and the taxes. There's a concern of the proposed bond and its impact on property taxes. There were requests and questions about costs of specific projects, which I just mentioned, questions about how the bond would be managed and whether there would be an oversight committee to ensure funds were being used appropriately. And so, to the last point, there absolutely will be an oversight committee. I've already pledged that my commitment to make sure that that committee has a representative from each one of our school communities. And we will get to that point in starting that, in the selection process, the public selection process, and all of that, once we pass our bond. And then, there's the support for the draft recommendation. That was a theme throughout each community input session. We have a very passionate community. We have a community that's very diverse in thought and reasoning, and I think we did a good enough job trying to give everyone the big picture of what it is that we need and why. And we walked away with, I think, a high degree of support for this draft recommendation. It's absolutely impossible to please everyone. And that's the thing that I think is so different about organizing a public process, especially for a number this big. And I've heard, I'll use Owen's quote that I've used so many times, this truly was the great compromise of everybody understanding that it's really, at the end of the day, it's all about what is best for Silver Falls, not for you individually, not for an individual school, but when we're thinking about ourselves as a community, this is about what is best for Silver Falls. And the reason why this is important is because the kids need it, and they need it badly. And I think we all share in that. With that said, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to, is it Eliza? Do I turn it over to you first?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Eliza.
Yeah. It's there. Hi, I'm Eliza Toylin, and I have been involved in this process for three and a half, close to four years. I was on the Long Range Facility Planning Committee and part of the superintendent work groups for the listening sessions, and then also part of the bond advisory committee. And I've worked with, I'd say, around 75 community members between those three committees that have lots of different voices. And I think that we came together with a really strong report. So, we had three final meetings to discuss our final recommendations after the Tell Us What You Think reporting, gathering information. The meeting that happened in April was our first. That was meeting number six, and then we had two in May. And during that time, we went from kind of coming to a common understanding as a bond advisory committee about what the structure of the standards were for the Warm, Safe, and Dry system. And I think that the intention behind that is to make sure that every school is brought to a common standard, and that was a really good choice, in my opinion. But after our first final meeting, we decided that there were still things that needed to be approached that hadn't been. There were some projects that were in the standards that might have been excess, and there were other projects that were not added that really needed to be attended to. So, we discussed the report, which I recommend everyone look at if they're concerned about how their perspective matches with their community, because it's a really well-written report that has got a lot of direct verbiage from the community members, and it also shows a common interest throughout. For one, why aren't we spending or trying to bond for the entire needs that our district has? And a large part of that is because our district cannot bear that large number. So, I think that this committee and the district did a good job of trying to whittle down to what are the most important things, including a new middle school. What we currently have as the middle school is not in very strong condition, and you can watch the video about what the middle school looks like, or go take a tour with Brett Davison. And you'll understand that that giant, beautiful brick building in the middle is just standing there like a skeleton, prevented from falling, but just taking up space. And the needs that are at the outlying buildings or the K-8 buildings and Mark Twain and Robert Frost are also really great. There's also needs at this building to kind of maintain it in a way where we don't end up with a big pile of deferred maintenance at the end, which I think is a wise choice. I think that some of the main sticking points during the last, between the second meeting where we really had a lot of disagreement about whether or not to move forward with the bond and what to do with the final meeting. At the final meeting, we all were in agreement that we should move this bond forward, and there was a lot of work that was done, I thought, really positively with the community about trying to figure out what priority projects we had and what projects we needed to add, like not quite with the same level of parity, but to make sure that those facilities had what they needed, like extra learning space at schools that really need extra learning space, and a cafeteria at Robert Frost, which will be met by building a new gym, because the gym there really isn't large enough to operate as a gym, and the students are losing learning time eating in their classrooms, and they are having problems with not being able to relax during lunch by having to be quiet by having their meals in the cafeteria, which is in the library. Anyhow, I think that's all I have to say.
I'm Rick Smith. I live just outside of Silverton on the Abacoa. I've lived here since 2011. I'm, we moved here from California. I'm the product of California's school system, but I have five children, all grown, married, and have children of their own. I have 21 grandchildren, and 11 of them live within the school district here and participate in some form or fashion in school from the K-8 up through high school. So, I was asked to serve on the board because I have grandchildren that go to school here. This was the first time that I participated in any activity like this, so a lot of this was new, but I found it very interesting and challenging. It was an interesting process, and I'm glad that I was asked and appreciate the opportunity. As we move through this toward the end, there were a number of things that were asked to be added, and we were unanimous in the fact that we did not want to exceed the $138 million, which was initially, yeah, proposed to the community in the form of some kind of a balloting or polling. Thank you. So, in order to maintain that limit, we actually removed a few things from our draft recommendation. One of those was structural upgrades to the Silvercrest Library. I think that's perhaps being covered by a grant, is that right? Yeah, the grant. And the other thing was the Evergreen Gym, which I think was $5 or $6 million, something like that. And as I recall, from one of those community meetings, even the members at the Evergreen Gym meeting were not very supportive of going ahead with that, and we had to make some cuts someplace. So, that was one of the projects that was removed in order to maintain a limit on the budget. There were a number of things that were discussed toward the end that we felt were important and should be added. We did a few other minor tweaks to the budget in order to allow us to add safety and security to the high school. We were pretty unanimous in that some of those things needed to be upgraded in order to provide security and cameras and things of that nature. There were some parking and traffic issues that needed to be addressed. We decided that should be included. Accessible entry ramps, that's something that we didn't think should be overlooked and forgotten. Somebody made a request for restroom improvements. These are necessities that certainly we didn't think should be overlooked. There were a number of... There were a number of modular units that were requested. We didn't approve all of them, but we did approve several and made recommendations to move some from some schools to other locations in order to provide modular units for some of those schools that needed a little extra teaching spaces. And then, as was mentioned about adding the gym at Robert Frost, we felt that was important. And lastly, one of the items was to fund a replacement on the roof here at the high school. And rather than recommend, I believe it was a 25-year roof, we decided that we should recommend a 30 or was it 35? 20 and 30? Anyway, it was a 30-year roof was recommended rather than go with the less expensive. We decided that we should have a higher-quality roof. That's all for my presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah DeSantis. I was born and raised in Silverton, went through the schools here in town, and am happy to be back here and raising my own kids and excited for them to go to schools that are much improved after we pass this bond. So the final recommendation, is that one up there? Oh, sorry. So as Eliza and Rick kind of provided an overview, the total package, we were still, even with some removals and then even more additions, we were still able to keep the total project budget at $138 million. However, we're getting a scope of work that is worth $142 million because of the OS, the Awesome Grant. So if all things go well in July with that grant, we will get even more scope than we planned for. And so that's really exciting. Well, I feel like, as these two have also said, that this proposal covers a wide variety of improvements across all the schools. And I think that when I look at the list here up on the screen, many of them are around safety, and everyone wants our children to be safe in school. And these are just critical to their safety and ongoing learning in a safe environment at all of these schools. So they seem, you know, just, I suppose, they seem like they're, oh, I don't know, I lost my train of thought. Sorry. It's been a long day. Anyway, so we decided on a 26-year bond term, which I don't think we've talked about yet, but we did at the last meeting talk about a 26 versus a 30 or 31-year term. And we decided to go with the 26-year term because it saves us so much money as taxpayers. I forget, it was like 150, was it 15 million? It was a lot. And while that will increase the property taxes per year for property taxpayers, it will decrease the overall. So we just felt that was the best use of our taxpayers' dollars and hope that our community will support that and understand the reason for that. An estimated increase is $1.65 per $1,000 in property taxes, and that's above, that's in addition to what we're already paying now for, on the current bond, and that will continue throughout. The breakdown, as we've seen before, is 75 million for the Silverton Middle School. We'll keep the existing gym, where I have many fond memories of sports, and the locker rooms because they were recently upgraded. And 67 million then, with the 63 plus the 4 million of the Awesome Grant, would go toward the Warm, Safe and Dry improvements that would touch all of the other schools. And those are outlined here below. As I mentioned, many of them are safety upgrades, fire alarm, doors, security cameras, sewer, electrical, ventilation, hazardous material abatement, things like that, sidewalks. There were a number of things that address the exterior of the schools just to make them safer and more accessible. And then things that go toward the Warm, Safe and Dry would be covered play areas at all schools, upgraded heating systems, window replacement, stormwater improvements. There's basement water infiltration at some schools. So again, this list that shows here on the screen is not fully comprehensive. There were a lot more details that we've discussed in all of these sessions, but this gives a general overview of the key points that this bond package will cover. And we're excited to present it to our community and hope that we can gain a lot of momentum through positive conversations and a big turnout at election time.
Thank you very much, Eliza, Rick, and Sarah. This is Sarah's second presentation. I saw her one earlier at Rotary today, so she'll sleep well tonight. To anybody watching this or for our public, all of the bond advisory committee meetings were public meetings, which fall under public meeting law. And so we have minutes for every meeting. Those are open to the public to read. So if you're wondering about decision-making process, things like that, it's all recorded in the minutes. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Now, here we are at the end of the presentation, and to open it up for questions that you may have for us.
I'll just say for the public as well that all seven of us were in attendance at the last VAC meeting. So we might be low on the question end because we've already heard from them. I mean, we can feel free to ask questions, but I'm really proud of us for all coming together to do that, make that important extra meeting to show how important this is to us. That wasn't, you know, we didn't have to go, but we all decided to show up, and I appreciate that very much. Questions for the...
It's not so much a question, but it is a thank you, a great big one. I know you guys went through a lot of work, looked at a lot of data, spent a lot of time, and it wasn't always easy time. And I really appreciate the commitment you made bringing forth that recommendation. I served on one of those, I forget which one, the Eugene Field Bond, the first or the second one, but it's a lot of work, so I know what it's like.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, I want to just extend a huge thank you to Wenahaw Group and to Eliza, to Rick, to Sarah, just for the amount of time that you guys all put into this process. Eliza, we were on the Long Range Facility Planning Committee, the K-8 work group before I joined the board. So, you know, we traveled a lot of time together, and I know how much time it takes on these committees to put into this away from family and other things. And just, I just want to say how much I appreciate your time and effort you put into the bond advisory committee. So thank you. The other thing too is, I think for our public to continue the dialogue is, look, there's no perfect bond. And I'm sure, you know, every one of us here, if we polled and went to the details of what at least the framework of this bond, every one of us maybe said, well, I don't think we need that, or I wish we had this, right? Every one of us has that. But I think we have to continue to dialogue and remind our community that, number one, there's no perfect bond, but this is the exact bond that we need for our kids and for our district right now. And, you know, this is well thought out. This is five years-ish in the making. Our consultants have told us that, no, their district has gone at this depth of research and time and consternation and back and forth of going through the numbers and looking at all the needs in the district. And I think, again, from here on out, should we approve this? It's going to be our job, and I would ask our bond advisory committee members in our community to continue to, you know, champion that, look, there's no perfect bond, but this is the exact bond we need for our community. And this is going to, and Scott, I'm going to borrow this term from you, this is affecting children who are yet to be born. My last one's in high school. I'm not, she's not going to be able to see the benefits of this, but kids who aren't even here yet are going to see the benefit of this, and we have to keep that in mind when we're looking towards this, and I think we need to continue to encourage our community to look at it from that way. One of our bond advisory committees, I think it was, community members was, I think Hillary mentioned, that it's a stewardship investment. I love that term because I think that's exactly what it is in our community. This is leaving a legacy for our community and for our kids for generations to come.
Just jump in for a second, because I want to reiterate something that Eliza said. You know, you mentioned this, the meeting that was supposed to be the last meeting, where we were coming to the end of the meeting and the facilitator did a fist-to-five, and no one was in their sweet spot. Everyone was like, and I think some of us looked around and went, uh-oh, because we weren't ready. You all weren't ready. I was just observing. So when I say "we," I just mean observing the room, right? And Cassie, who is just an absolutely astonishing facilitator, said, I think we might need another meeting because we need, we can't just brush over this. We can't just pretend we're okay and move on. We need to address whatever discomfort is still lingering. We need to go there, and we need to unearth it, and we need to look at it. And so Wenahaw came back with that last meeting with all sorts of new information and helped the group move through really like details, like let's, okay, you want to get in the weeds? Let's get in the weeds. Here are all the projects that need to be thought about and weighed. And, you know, we went back and forth, and I just thought that that was such a powerful sort of moment of crisis of confidence and then a dig deeper and recommit to this process because there was never any, from what I could see, there was never any question that it was needed. There wasn't a, maybe we just shouldn't do this at all. It was a, how are we going to do this in a way that meets all of these needs? And how do we show up for the community and bring the best bond recommendation forward and listening to all of the folks that contributed to those listening sessions and honor those passionate needs that people articulated? And I just wanted to really credit the group for coming back and showing up for that last meeting and digging deep and doing that hard work. And I think the product really reflects that. I think it was pretty extraordinary. It was really fun to witness. It's really, really pretty incredible. So thank you all for being such a good, amazing part of that process.
Yeah. I just want to thank everybody who was involved in this five-year process. We had these meetings, the Tell Us What You Think meetings, the listening sessions, the Long Range Facility sessions. There has been so many people involved in this for so long, having good discussions, that now when it comes time to start talking about voting yes for the bond, there's going to be so many people out there who know details, who know, who have good, involved, educated answers to people who come to them with questions. And I think that's really, really well. It's one of the benefits of having all of these meetings over these three, four, or five years. And I think there's a lot of people involved, a lot of sweat equity, and there's going to be lots of good people who can give good answers when it comes time to vote for this thing. Thank you.
I can't really add anything that hasn't been said tonight except my agreement to it, and my thank you to the community members as well for the time that you spent and really the angst that I saw, the serious effort that people put in and consideration, and I appreciate that. I just encourage our community members that aren't as involved, maybe they don't, they're not as engaged, that they'll just really place their trust in the effort that you all put in. So thank you.
Yeah, being the last one, I just want to say thank you, as everyone else has. It's a lot of personal time that's given, and there is a lot of homework outside of that that I don't think any of us really understand, depending on the person, how much in-depth work you do before you come to in a meeting and all the questions that you have. And I suspect there will always be questions, you know, and whether they all get answered or not, probably not. But again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you for your efforts.
I just wanted to put another pitch out there for asking questions and trusting, you know, trusting the work that's done. And that was a huge thing, too, is like people have their own ideas about what's smart, what's efficient. And I think everybody wants to do things that are smart and efficient, right? We don't not want to do those things. But we also have to trust the process that's come before this moment. And if you wonder why something is the way it is, I would reach out to Eliza or Josh because I think both of them, they're the only two people who've been there through the whole thing. And I know Eliza takes copious notes. So anyway, thank you to everybody. And if you really have a hard question that you can't get answered, I would go to those two. Yeah.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I would agree that Eliza and Josh, your commitment is truly extraordinary. Steve Nielsen and I, this is really Steve, and so Steve, if I get the number wrong, forgive me, but 47 public meetings, 47 public meetings in three years since 2020, July. That is incredible. And to have a couple of our community members who were with us for the entire ride is truly extraordinary. And we did a lot of this work under COVID. We didn't make excuses for COVID. We worked through it. We just found a way around. We did all of our 11 listening sessions, the first round, outside in the wintertime. We did what we had to do to make sure that we got to this point right now. And I truly feel that this is the destiny for Silver Falls School District. I also want to mention how grateful I am for my team, Steve Nielsen, Leslie Roach, Dan Bush, and Brandon Larson, all who contributed, some directly. Steve and I have been joined at the hip for the last three years working through this. We're closer than family at this point, Steve. And our principals as well have been very understanding and very supportive. And lastly, I just want you to know that I work for you. I report to you as your sole employee, and you are my boss. I have seven wonderful bosses, and you are the best boss I've ever had in 26 years because you truly understand the importance of this work. At its very core, it has to do with kids. Nothing else really matters. It has to do with these kids, and every child in Silver Falls School District is our child. And I cannot thank you enough. I will remember this for as long as I live. And for those of you rotating off the board, I now have good friends. And for those coming in, you truly get the work as well. So thank you for having us. And I believe we're going to switch to polling.
So Jennifer, are we, so I didn't have more questions for this curve, but I did have a question. So are we, I just wasn't sure how that was.
That's fine. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, unless we have any other questions for Scott.
Can I just say, I think you guys should know that cooling systems are also included in this. Even though we're Warm, Safe and Dry, cooling is also comfortable.
Cold, Safe and Dry.
It's really important.
Great.
We tried to change it.
My daughter thought my car today about to lose her mind from her hot classroom. God, I just mentioned that.
Okay, so can you, are you...
We can bring it back up later.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just wasn't sure how you wanted to...
And so just so you know, the next step after this meeting, you have some time to ruminate and think about the information that's been shared, and we will come back on the 20th for a regular June board meeting and to take action. Thank you all.
Thanks.
So Jeremy's here to talk to us about polling, I'm assuming, and other strategic things. Hi, Jeremy.
Hey, how's everyone doing tonight? Thank you for letting me zoom in on you. And I have Ben Patinkin here from Patinkin Research Strategies, who's going to do the actual polling presentation of the numbers, but I wanted to, because I wanted him here to be able to answer all your questions as well. That's our thing here. So amazing presentation I just listened to, and, you know, the next step here is what the polling we did. What we did was take all that work, that's happened, that just got presented, and we decided, we put it out into the poll of the community to see where we're at and see what the temperature is, the work, you know, the response to the work that this community development, bond development group has done. You know, I hate to be the, you know, come down a little bit from the great presentation, but part of our job here at Red Public Affairs and Patinkin Research Strategies, giving you all the, you know, the unvarnished and direct truth. You know, what we have tonight is polling that we have a path to victory. we have a path to victory. Our path is narrow, and I think you all probably know that, that anticipated that. What we do have, though, is it's clear that there is community support for very specific parts of your bond program. But what our path ahead, our work is, is to actually educate on the overall need. Most of your community doesn't have an understanding of why this bond is so important, why all the stuff that was just talked about in terms of the need at every K eight, need of the middle school, all of those things. So what we're going to talk about tonight is the challenges of getting to 50 plus one. But there's also a clear opportunity here that will, you'll see to educate, that there's a, there's a portion of the community that it just doesn't know, and they don't, aren't engaged with the schools, but the way you are. And that's going to be part of our challenge of between now and November, you know, this coming November. I'll stop there and turn it over to Ben to present. He'll probably need presenting rights. And we'll, I'll be around to answer questions after.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Thank you all for having me here tonight. Yeah, there is a path. As Jeremy noted, there, it is, you know, it is a tougher path, but it is there. And we'll go through the data and take a look at all of that. And then, as Jeremy noted, we can go to questions. A quick review of who we talked to. So this survey was a survey of 400 likely November 2023 voters living within the school district. We used a voter file sample and then diminished the universe to reflect a 2023 electorate. We're actually going to get, give you a snapshot of what that looks like compared to registered voters as a whole. So you get a sense to what Jeremy was saying in regards to a lot of voters not really having a handle on the challenges that are faced by school facilities. The margin of error for the sample as a whole is plus or minus 4.9 percentage points. We were in the field at the end of May, beginning of June. We refer to, on occasion, you might see references to younger and older voters. Younger, it's rather arbitrary. Younger is under age 50. Older is over age 50. The canned joke is, I changed that in seven years when I hit age 50. And then we do have some regions defined by precincts, Silverton, and then the western portion of the district, and then the eastern portion of the district. So a quick view of the demographics. This column right here, you can see on the screen, is registered voters. This is, you know, what all registered voters within your district look like. They, it's an even split in terms of age, 50% are under age 50, 50% are over age 50. You can see the zip code different differentials here, and then some partisan numbers in terms of party registration. But a significant number of NAVs, independents, and that sort of thing. Now, look at on the right-hand side, and you see what a November 2023 electorate looks like. It is substantially older. You have 68% of the sample over age 50. That's 18 points higher than registered voters as a whole, significantly lower in terms of younger voters, younger, again, under age 50. These are your parents. A lot of these are your parents. But a lot of the folks over age 50, particularly your seniors, are not in your schools. They do not see the challenges faced by facilities. They don't know about the cooling problems that we just talked about. And so it's the job of the campaign and the school district, as you move towards November, to start educating in a very robust way. I know you all have been doing a lot of work over the past five years. Now you go into overdrive. You're in the last sprint once you hit towards the summer here, and you have a final vote on whether to put this on the ballot. And I'd also just note really quickly, registration, there are far fewer independents or NAVs on the, who are likely to vote in a November 2023 electorate. There are more people who are registered as a Democrat or as a Republican. All right. So the issue landscape. One of the first questions we ask in any of our polls is here at the bottom in this blue text, or blue box, do you think the Silver Falls School District school buildings are in excellent physical condition, good, fair, or poor? Now, we sort of net these into net negative and net positive. And what we want here is sort of counterintuitive. We want more people to say that the condition of your schools is net negative. Because if it's broken, people are more likely to want to fix it. If it's not broken, they're less likely to want to fix it. That old saying. Right now, you have 39% of likely November 2023 voters saying school condition is net negative. You have 12% who say poor, the worst condition, and you have 27% who say fair. You have 30% who say school condition is net positive, 7% who say it's in excellent condition, 23% who say schools are in good condition. Here's a kicker, and this is sort of a blessing and a curse. You have 31% of the electorate who just throw their hands up in the air and say, I don't know. This is a testament to how much work we need to do over the course of the next number of months as we move towards November in terms of education. A lot of people just don't know. They're not in your schools. They are not aware of the challenges that you all face. And here's the deal. The more people know about the challenges faced by their local schools, the more likely they are to vote yes. You have 54% of the people who said that schools are in positive condition, they're voting yes, 54% of them. But you have 64% of those who say schools are in a net negative position, saying that they're going to vote yes. The more likely you see that you are to say schools need help in terms of their condition, the more likely you are to vote yes. So that's the importance of the education effort that you all face. Moving along here. So this is where we start. On the right-hand side, you see a lot of text. When you read the text, it's going to read like Sanskrit. And the reason why it reads like Sanskrit is because Oregon law can be annoying at times. You are given a 10 words for your bond title and 20 words for your bond question. And a good number of those words are tied up legally for the, in things that we must state. So you have very little room to make your sort of thesis statement on what you want to do with this bond. So the title reads that we tested, Bonds Increasing Safety Repairing Every School, Replace Silverton Middle School. Doesn't read like a sentence, but it is. The question reads this, 20-word question, Shall District Increase Safety Repair All Schools Replace Middle School Issue $138 Million in General Obligation Bonds Audits Required? Then we ask, are you going to vote yes or no? So if you look at the numbers here, 44% are voting yes, 36% are voting no, 20% are undecided. Again, you see a large undecided number here. The intensity of feeling is sort of even on either side, 17%, so one in five saying they're going to vote yes strongly, another one in five saying they're going to vote no strongly. These numbers mirror very closely what we tested in our first poll for the district back in January, where you had 43% voting yes, 33% voting no, 24% undecided. I know that work has been done in between then and now in terms of outreach, but that again, just is testament to, you need to raise the volume even more as you start moving into a campaign. And frankly, that's what campaigns are for, in order to really see movement. And we do see movement at the end of this. So I don't, I want to make that clear. Looking at some of the demographics here, this is again, the demographic, looking at demographics to that yes-no question on the bond caption and question. There's a gender gap. This is what we usually see. Women tend to be more supportive, particularly of school-oriented tax increases than men. So you have a 12-point yes margin amongst women. It's pretty much an even race statistically amongst men. Here's just how important it is amongst, to get your parents to, to show up and vote. Younger voters, you have a 31-point yes margin. It's 56% yes, 25% no. Amongst voters over age 50, it's an even race in aggregate. Among seniors, voters over age 70, the bond is down by seven points, 36 to 43, but with 21% undecided. Parents are your most supportive subgroup. This is what we see all the time in any bond or levy poll that we look at. 65%, so two-thirds of parents right now are voting yes, 22% are voting no, 12% are undecided, giving you a 43-point yes margin with that group. Those who used to have kids in the schools, or might have kids in the schools in the future, it's an even race, 41 to 43. This is sort of like the group that's most important for us in terms of outreach as we move forward, particularly for any campaign. And then those who have never had kids in schools, it's 33 to 36. Again, sort of an even race, but a significant chunk of them undecided. Again, you need to make your case to this crowd. And then regionally, there's honestly not that much of a difference here, especially when you start dividing things up into three groups with 400 people for your, for your full sample. The margin of error behind each of these subgroups is going to be higher. In this poll, you are doing better on the eastern side of the district. In Silverton proper, it's an eight-point margin, 4335. And then on the western portion of the district, it's a four-point margin, 4339. There is a big education gap. This is again, what we usually see, the defined college plus is anyone with a four-year degree or more. You're ahead by 25 points with that group. It's an even race amongst those without a, without a four-year degree, it's 36 to 39. So really, it's not region that's defining things right now. It's age and educational attainment and gender to the lesser degree that is really driving vote choice when it comes to this bond. We asked a question after our initial ask of the bond caption and question. We asked a follow-up. It's sort of like a summary statement that you typically see on your, on your ballot, where we say, you know, let me tell you a little bit more about this. The proposal is designed to address critical repair needs at every school across the district, including heating and cooling systems, addressing leaking roofs and basements that can have toxic mold, removing asbestos, fixing, fixing rusting pipes, et cetera. And then the bond would also address safety, safety concerns, replace the Silverton Middle School. And it would do this, we asked it at two different thresholds, $1.28 per thousand and $1.65 per thousand. And then we asked, you know, would you vote yes or no on this? Whether it was $1.28 or $1.65, we really didn't see that much difference in terms of overall support. The same sort of movement that you see here in this aggregate, we saw for both of those two splits. So frankly, not much movement on the yes side. It goes from 44 to 46. That's within the margin of error. There is movement out of the undecided column into no, that is outside the margin of error. So it goes from 36 to 42. So we finish out after the summary statement at 46 yes, 42 no, 13 undecided. We did ask a question to try and get a sense of, okay, you know, what happens if we included some funding to do some needed repairs at the Silverton High School? We outlined those repairs and said, do you, do you favor a proposal of doing this? 38% were opposed, 47% were in favor. And again, you see the proclivity to support or oppose dependent upon awareness of facility condition across the district. Those who are more aware of the challenges faced by facilities were more supportive of wanting to include Silverton High School as a part of the bond. I'd note at 47%, this is pretty much on par with where you're at for the bond as a whole. Based on these data, my recommendation would be continue to move forward with Silverton High School repairs as a part of the bond So messaging the bond, I'm not going to go into all of the different responses to the many questions that we asked as a way to see, you know, in terms of education on the different pieces that this bond does, but I will highlight all the things that we tested. So we asked a number of questions getting to safety and health-oriented themes as part of the bond. So talking about removing asbestos, improving fire safety and security, focusing more specifically on, on safety and security, particularly in terms of updating outdated fire alarms, security technology, and that sort of thing, middle school update and the security enhancements that would come with that, talking about air quality, smoke season, you know, not having your staff have to make decisions about whether to close windows and broil, or open windows and suffocate because of smoke. And then just talking about the need to update fire alarms. We also asked questions about fiscal accountability, noting, noting that, you know, bond funds raised would be, that you all have control of them, that no one else does, legally saying. Also talking about accountability, how there's independent auditing that's required of the school district. A lot of people don't know that. So we have to restate it, and you all should restate it repeatedly because they're just not aware. And then also that there will be a community oversight committee overseeing bond spending, talking about the potential impact on the economy, positive impact as a result of the bond, as well as the awesome grant. And then lastly, messaging that goes towards, you know, improving the community, improving education quality, and then necessary repairs. So as you can see, quite a few messages tested here to try and understand what are the best things that you can say as you go out and educate the community? What's the frame? What are the, what are the key pieces that you need to inform your constituencies about as we get closer to, to the bond? And we asked a number of questions, all of these, to give you sort of like the broader points. But then we try and sum it all up into a basic frame. And this is the basic frame we came up with based on both direct questioning and regression modeling, which is an analytical tool that we will use, not just to understand, like, you know, how many people say that this is a very convincing reason to support the bond, but also if more people knew that this was the case, like the equality message, it would make them more likely to vote yes. So the frame is this, the bond is an important, accountable investment in every school in our district, addressing critical repair needs that enhance security, health, and safety of students and staff, and replacing the aging middle school that dates to 1938. This ensures students have access to safe, modern classrooms that reflect best practices in today's learning environment. This is your elevator pitch right here. And then you can insert all the messages that we just looked at, or the top, top testing ones underneath it. But this is sort of your segue ahead as you enter into a conversation. So where we end. As a reminder, we started out at 44% yes, 36% no, 20% undecided. Again, after we did that summary statement, we get to 46 to 42. But then after messaging, we get to 4941. Now you're within margin of error of 50%. And this is frankly, right on par with where we were back in January as well, where we, in terms of where we finished in that poll, too. This is movement outside the margin of error. You start at 44, you finish at 49. That is essentially 50% for all intents and purposes. There is a path. You can move people. It is a matter of getting out there and educating and speaking in one voice about the needs of your community. And with that, I'm going to pass this back to Jeremy.
Yeah, no, Ben, you said it, you said it great there. If you look at the screen, I think what you see here is a movement of, first ask, okay, I have, you know, an initial opinion based on some real kind of wonky ballot language. It gets tighter when we talk about what it's actually going to cost people. Like when they hear that price per 1,000, and they go, oh, okay, that, what's that, what does that mean for my pocketbook? And then you get, you know, we, we give them the case, essentially. And you see people make a decision, okay, a few percentage points. At the end, and get to 49. At the end of the day, you know, for your purposes as a school board, you, there are two tracks to a bond campaign. One, you've heard me talk about this, but I'll talk about it again. One is the school district education effort. And this is where the school district has to provide factual information that gets people to understand the need. And that's something we have already teed up and prepared to go forward with. And the other part is what, you know, some board members may lead, or community members may lead, and that's the PAC, the political action committee, to make the compelling yes case. Some districts and campaigns can get away with one doing all the heavy lifting or the other. My advice to you, if you're to move forward, is that both have to do the heavy lifting. This is going to need both train tracks of robust messaging, making the case going all the way through election day. Because that, you know, what this can come down to is that 10% sitting down there with the little green arrow. And how do we capture those folks to move you into a yes, no? I'll stop there, and Ben and I can answer questions.
Quick question, if that's okay. What, what else do we know about those, those green voters, those undecided voters? I mean, are there other demographics? I mean, are there other demographics we know about them that would help us target them?
They tend to be older. They tend to be a little bit more independent and also a little bit more conservative. But yes, we can definitely target those folks through a campaign, not through the district for Jeremy, and and reach out to them. And the good news, based on this slide, you don't need all ten percent. And in any campaign, you know, for any bond, whether it's or or any ballot measure, statewide or local, you typically can't expect to get the bulk of undecided voters, but you don't need it. You need two percent of ten, that is dual.
Yeah, you guys have seen numbers a lot with different bonds, I'm sure. When you see numbers like this at this point, is that like a twenty-five percent, fifty percent, sixty percent? Like, what are you seeing in terms of?
Yeah, I mean, we we do see patterns, but I also, we're we've been around this a lot, as you say, and I we're always a little careful to make hard and fast rules because campaigns matter. Individuals involved matter. All these things, there are variables that can and will impact outcome. I will, I'll be direct with you all, this is right on the edge of where we see viability. If I did not see movement from the first ask to the last, I would be very concerned. We do have movement outside the margin of error, but this is not, this is going to be razor thin. This isn't something where you can expect to win with sixty percent, obviously, you wouldn't expect that looking at these numbers. But just in general, you're on the edge. I'll bring up an example, though. It was a levy, but a similar, very difficult campaign we just conducted in Sherwood, where they were facing a seven million dollar budget hole thanks to a budgeting error. They decided they had zero, they had no levy, again, they decided to go out for a levy, which was one dollar and fifty cents per thousand increase this May. They were starting from zero, so there was an entirely new levy. You know, they never got above then forty-seven, forty-eight percent in polling we did for them. And our recommendation was like, you know, you know, this is going to be a hard effort. They embraced it, went after it, ran a robust, both district and PAC effort, very targeted on the PAC side. They got certain voters to outweigh outperform their percentage of overall registered electorate and, you know, wound up winning a fifty-eight percent yes. So they outperformed massively the polling, that's because they conducted, it did everything we asked of them anymore. So it's a good example just recently of, you know, a tough polling environment that wound up resulting in a in a yes, you know, result. So that isn't a hard and fast. I know you want numbers, what a percentage of success. It just isn't as easy as that, unfortunately, but you do have a challenge, there's no question.
No, that's fair, thank you.
Other questions? I really appreciate your presentation. I hope that we can get a copy of that so that we can study it further and especially that, you know, the elevator speech messaging, that was really great. I'll start memorizing that.
Part of our responsibility as your consultant is to put that into super accessible format for you in the coming weeks and months, so that you all will have much of that. I I what we wound up doing is giving you a thirty-second and a two-minute and five-minute. So are you presenting in an elevator, are you presenting at a PTA, are you presenting at a brotherhood, right? And we'll we'll be able to supply the both district and board members with all that, great materials and but I always say, materials are one-way conversations. We can give you all the talking points, we can give you the materials, but at the end of the day, two-way conversations is how close races are one. So you use those to have the convo and really convince people.
Really good point.
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen. We really appreciate the presentation and the efforts that you've put forth and we've got work to do.
We can. All right, hopefully, see you guys next week.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, so did you want to follow up with some conversation?
Well, yeah, and I mean, I think this also triggers maybe some conversation too, right? So topically, since we just got off of this one, I mean, it feels like if it's going to be tight, which is kind of how we you know, might be, you know, ten votes, it might be a hundred votes, but it's probably not going to be, you know, five, eight percent. So if it's going to be tight, it feels like we need to be upfront and say, we're going to invest in the associate, you know, these folks that are going to help us make this happen because they know how to do it. You use Sherwood as an example. Get what you pay for, right? So, you know, if we if we do the most, if we invest as much as we can invest reasonably and responsibly to give ourselves the best shot, all the better. If we don't do that, I think we only increase the chance of losing by that hair, you know, that that little tiny bit instead of winning by it. And I guess, so my my comment, I guess, to all of you and, you know, so let's support the district ponying up or the consultants as much as we need to to make this happen. Otherwise, why bother, I guess? Because that's how it feels to me. If it's going to be that close, we've probably got to do it all perfect.
I'm glad you mentioned that because we do, we have gotten a lot of questions about, well, how much is this costing and how much is that costing? I like, again, I'm sure all of us like to be really efficient and smart with our money and smart investments yield big results. And so that's kind of, to me, the response to those kinds of questions. And hearing your support, I think, is really important. So thank you for bringing that up.
To my thinking, the cost of failing is is really high. And so you have to weigh your your cost of success against the cost of failing. And I also think about the cost that has been invested already in terms of human hours and capital. You know, over the last five years and over the, you know, five years prior to that, the foundation or the, you know, kind of what we're all standing on. And I would really hate to lose that investment as well.
And there's places to pinch pennies, but that probably isn't it, not with this particular, you know, project. We we have to be all in here. I mean, it's it's all in or not. Because if it's going to be that close.
We do have Jeremy signed on through November, December. I mean, the contract would cease if we don't move forward with the bond, but this is where his work really ramps up.
And we we and the people watching and the people sitting here also have to be committed to do the work. It won't happen by its money on its own, isn't going to, isn't going to do it. You have to work and tend them.
The political action committee has to form, we have to have investment there, we have, you know, I mean, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hours ahead for a lot of people.
All right, any other questions, comments, discussions, all along?
Well, I I have another question.
Go ahead.
So as it relates to the actual, so we received the the recommendation from the committee. We now have to make a decision. What, how many of the details in that? Are we vote, is it like a giant, here it is? Is it, I mean, are we mostly voting to move forward with a bond that sort of is the seventy-five, sixty-seven? And that's really all that matters? I mean, what 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 is the board voting on? What are we deciding? What do we need to discuss for the vote in a week? I mean, I don't want to show up in a week and have really valid questions from board members pop up, but now we don't know where we're going to go. I I don't want to end up, you know, in that meeting before, the meeting that was supposed to be the last, that wasn't the last, right?
Yeah, yeah, we don't want it to be.
I don't want that to be us. So I guess I want to ask those questions now. And let me give you a for instance, right? So we heard that it's going to be really tight. There was at least one, specifically one thing, one late-breaking decision that was made at that meeting last week, two weeks, whatever. That made me nervous that we might lose votes. Is that something we need to talk about? Is that something that, or are we just, it's kind of all in? Or, I mean, what what is our, how much discussion do you want to entertain? I guess that's my point.
Well, first of all, I will say that, you know, we have, from the beginning, you were the person who brought this up from the very beginning, that the bond committee that you were on, you presented the recommendation and then the board changed it.
Right. And I I also said I would never want to do that.
Yes.
But also, to be fair, it was changed dramatically, as in they almost doubled it. Right, so so we recommended, you know, twenty-two million and they went out with thirty-six or something, right? So it was an entirely different scope of change that I'm talking about, but you're right. I mean, I I want to respect that.
I did mention that to the BAC at the beginning. So to me, like, trusting the process that's happened every step of the way is part of this process. So, I mean, I think we should talk about whatever we need to talk about, but it's just my, that's what what's happened thus far. So for you guys, you can tell us, so the the money split, that's what part of the recommendation is?
Yes.
The term?
Yes.
What else?
Everything that was presented in the add-ons and then the takeaways, that also. The entire bond recommendation is what you'll be taking action on. And I would just go back to, if I could, because this is your decision to make as a board, I would just go back to Jennifer's comment on honoring the process. Forty-seven public meetings to get here and that BAC is counting on you. And they, they, as well as hundreds of other people, are depending on you. And they've been involved on the ground floor since the get-go. So I just want you to think about that as a board and and what the BAC might be thinking if 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 they hear that word, change.
Yeah, I would, I would be really concerned about fiddling with anything because I think it opens up Pandora's box. It's a slippery slope, choose your metaphor. Because what it suggests is that we or some subgroup of us know better than the
And you don't.
massacre, and we don't.
You don't.
So I think we either respect the work they did, as we indicated we did, and accept their recommendation, or we don't. But I I would be very concerned about entering in any sort of piecemeal conversations about what to what to accept and what to what to reject or I think if we have questions about how decisions were come, were arrived at, that tonight would be the time to have those. If we're like, well, we're really wondering about that gym decision, whatever it is. Ask that now, get that resolved, get it out of your system. And then be ready to move forward. That that's my view.
I'm in similar mindset as as what's just been said about honoring the process. Again, forty-seven meetings, but we can go back all the way till to the strategic visioning statement in two thousand strategic visioning work group, which I had the pleasure of being a part of in two thousand eighteen and then in nineteen, the start of the the Long Range Facility Planning Committee. Every piece is a building block on which this BAC has been or has the bond recommendation is is coming to us and to on dawn in front of us here and voting on next week. And I think it's essential that if we're going to honor what our community wants, that we have to honor the process. In my opinion, is is every perfect, is every process perfect? No, but in my opinion, this process has been fairly, I hate to use the hyperbolic word of ironclad, but I don't know if there's anything else we could do in this process to to make it more sound and more encompassing and more, as accurate as possible. So I would really have a hard time refuting what has been brought to us as a recommendation.
Lori's been trying to get in.
Yeah, I I appreciate what Jonathan said, but it got me a little nervous because I don't, someone had said it was at the BAC meeting that, well, the board can change this if they want. And I'm like, ew, you know, I thought, where did that come in? You know, I mean, I was, I was sick when I heard that, I want, why would we do that if that's, it it's almost like everything else has been a joke or it's a waste of people's time. And I think that would be disgusting if we started to consider rearranging and changing things, frankly. So the only thing I I'm wondering about that came up, the BAC and Eliza, you did fantastic. We're talking now about, is this board or is the new incoming board going to be voting on?
This board.
This board, that's why we flipped the meeting, so this is the work session. And that is going to be our main meeting, is going to be on the twentieth, so that this, because this board has been we're responsible and we need to be the ones who vote for it.
I understand that. I'm talking about the, what I didn't finish was I, talking about the piece about paying the additional monies for the campaign. That that part that was just mentioned earlier, maybe I misunderstood, is that the incoming board gets to discuss that? Or is that already?
We've already paid that.
It's already in motion.
Right.
It's already, okay.
There's no new authorization.
There's no new, oh, okay, it's already been authorized. Okay, that's good. Because I didn't want that thrown in either. So, okay, so, yeah, okay, then that makes sense then. I just wanted to ask those questions. Thank you.
And and I mean, just to maybe make it really clear, because I want to make sure I'm not being mischaracterized a little bit. This was a late-breaking, definitely not unanimous decision made at the very last meeting. And so that's, that was one of the reasons, you know, I'm not talking about.
Go ahead and let's bring it up and talk about it.
There was that decision to regarding the gym at Robert Cross. I think that has the possibility of creating a narrative that we don't want fully aware. A narrative of, you know, building a new gym in a school that already has a gym in town and we're not going to build one, even if the people everywhere didn't want it. And I'm not saying that's true enough, I don't even know, right? I don't want to create that narrative because I've heard that narrative so many times in my career. And it can go like wildfire. And I don't want to see that cause us to chip away even ten votes or fifteen votes somewhere that was the difference in this one. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yep.
And it's, it's one.
Again, what it was about, you mentioned Robert Cross.
Yeah, the building the the second gym at Robert Cross.
Okay.
And dropping, building the gym at Evergreen. But that was the, it was a trade-off discussion that was made. They they landed on it, it was not unanimous, there was people that didn't agree with that, right? So it was, it was one, and and they spoke and I'm I want, I'm not trying to chip away at a hundred pages of stuff. I'm I'm talking like one decision that was made that made me go, huh? Is that going to create a narrative we don't want running around right when we're trying to get by? And especially from the outline communities, which historically have caused these bonds to fail. That was my fear.
Oh, oh.
And so I wanted to have that conversation before we just rubber stamped it and had an unintended consequence.
Yep.
So that's all I'm trying to do.
I I never, what you're sharing, which I'm thinking, thank you. I wasn't seeing it that way because I know we were all quiet, we were instructed not to get involved. But I thought it was brought up, it was discussed and it was voted on, so I felt it was done fairly. But but but, so the things that you're bringing up, I I guess they didn't come across my thought process, but maybe the rest of you might feel different, I don't know. But I was, I'm, I appreciate what you're saying, but I was, you know, because I felt the process at the last meeting was very, very, done very sensitively and well thought out.
Well, I don't disagree with anything you said. I think it was very fair and I think it ultimately was voted on. I'm just asking if, you know, we're ultimately responsible and if the bond fails, nobody's going to blame the BAC.
No, we have to have a discussion, I'm glad we're having the discussion.
But how is, I'm curious, though, how is that different from any other vote that was taken? Because all of the different issues were voted on and they, the majority, right? And so I didn't, I don't, I guess I don't see that as any different.
And so, I didn't, I don't, I guess I don't see that as any different from any of the other decisions that were made.
Only because I felt like it created a narrative we didn't want. That was all. Most of them didn't feel like they were, you know, they're off in the weeds, they're here, they're there. This one is a really, really easy soundbite, and it just, it made me nervous.
I think the other way it's different is it's a, it's a really big swing for Evergreen in terms of the amount. You know, and I, I didn't get a sense of whether they, you know, at the, at the listening session with them, I didn't get a sense of whether they wanted it and that would change a vote or not, but I just, I think it's a, it's a really big swing, so I thought of that as a, as a difference.
Right.
There was, were people commenting that they were from Evergreen, they were more likely to vote against a bond if it included the gym. So, I mean, pretty strong evidence.
That's what I thought was shared.
Because they felt like it wasn't money well-sent.
Right.
And I, the question, I, I actually did also, I mean, it was, it does, like, is this what we're going to do? But I thought that the, every single vote that was taken, it might not have been unanimous, but it was pretty clear one way or the other on the yeses and no's. So, I felt comfortable with that. I felt like we needed to trust the decision-makers that were, were in that, in that group. But I definitely, I had a little bit of, you know, feel what you feel, but got to go with it.
I'll be honest, I, I kind of had a little pause there for a second, too. And again, kind of from an equity standpoint, looking at, we're building another gym, but, and, and one of the other facilities in the district doesn't have it, however, I want to come back to the data, and folks brought that up at the conversation about the Evergreen families, what, what their input was, and what Owen just shared, too, about increasing the amount, and would that be a negative detractor, you know, to our voters in, in that community? And whether, how I see it or not, I'm have to, okay, I have to go back to what has been recommended in the predicate times and the listening sessions and what our BAC is asking us to do, even though it gave me a time for pause. I, I agree. It was the only item. Right. But I'm going to go back to what's already been told and done. Make it, make sure we have the conversation.
And I think the conversation's good, but then it goes back to if we're going to trust the process, and if we're going to honor that, then Mr. Smith is correct, that what he said would be considered true and be considered fact. So, so then we deduct that, but we take everything else, and so, I mean, to me, it, that doesn't make sense. It's not like an apple you could whittle away.
Well, you know, I, I thought about this issue a little bit myself, and having grown up on Evergreen Road and deep ties out there, you know, my sense is the demographic out there, I'm sure there's a few people that say, "Oh yeah, we want to have a gym and we're willing to pay for it." But I think probably, on balance, the folks are going to be more conservative money-wise and say, you know, "It was good enough for me, and in fact, it's better than it was when, same building, but they've added some chicken wire to it to keep the birds out, so it's better than it was when, you know, when I went there." So, I think, you know, from my own thinking on balance, I don't, I don't see a big jealousy issue out there, and probably more fiscal decision-making.
And, yeah, and I don't, I think maybe the messaging around it needs to be really cafeteria. It's really, where it's not adding a second gym, it's transforming one gym into a cafeteria, and that is something that they lack. Mark Twain has a caf, they have a dedicated space.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that was the, the thinking that went into it, and I think maybe that's messaging that has to happen, and I'm really glad you brought, brought the issue up, because I'd rather have the conversation now.
Yeah, me too. Me too.
Yeah, I, I had the same pause, and I went, "Huh," but it just, it boils down to where was the greatest need? The greatest need was Robert Cross. I mean, I really do. I mean, that's, that's where it needed, I, I think there's a lot of pride in that community, Evergreen, I think they kind of just like it that way. I mean, I'm a, you know, I, I think for, for every person who's going to be upset about it, some will be like, "Good, we don't want." So, I, it's kind of, I, I think, I think that was the right decision. I think for every vote you might have, that, if I can think of people who would vote no because the Evergreen gym was moved from there, the budgetary item for the gym at Evergreen was moved to Robert Cross, I, I think you might have gained two votes, because it's, it's an issue, at, at the space and stuff, that Robert Cross was an issue.
Yeah, okay.
And I, and I think maybe this is, maybe this is semantics, but we weren't talking necessarily about one gym or the other. Like, one did not supplant the other.
Yeah.
It was, the, the Evergreen gym was a big-ticket item, that taking that off the project allowed a whole lot of other things to get done.
Correct.
So, you know, I think we also need to get away from the, "It was this one or this one, and you guys lost and you guys won."
Right.
It was a four, $5 million, and remember, and it allowed a whole lot of other really, really important, necessary accessibility ramps, all those things that weren't even there, and then we had the opportunity to include them, so.
Yeah, I actually, I mean, I agree with, with everything you're saying, I, that's not, I, I just didn't want to create a narrative that we couldn't overcome.
Absolutely.
So that was my concern. It's not, not the, not the specific implementation details.
Right.
It just, my own personal experience is that there have been enough times where that narrative has gotten out of control, and it has been part of the reason bonds have failed in the past, and I just want to make sure we aren't creating that. That was my concern.
And that, and that goes back to my point when I was commenting, there's been so many people interviewed, involved in these processes for the past four, five years, that I think it would be hard for a bad narrative to take hold. It'll get squashed pretty quick, because there's so many people...
That's a fair point.
There's so many people who kind of, who would, you know, go, "Yeah, I heard that, but, but no, no, I was in some of the meetings, and it really, this is, I, I get what you're saying, but..." Instead of, there just isn't, there's a lot of people that are ready with a, with a fire extinguisher to put out a brush fire before it gets out of hand, kind of. I, I, that's my optimistic take on this.
And when is there not a narrative, you know what I mean, saying about all that?
Well, there, there will be lots of them.
Yeah, there will be lots of them. We're going to be able to solve them.
There will be a never-ending barrage of them. And we've seen some recent, you know, social media stuff in the last few weeks on this, and it, you know, to my, from what I've seen, it got squashed pretty quick with fact, and, so I, I, you know, again, I want to trust that process, that, again, we have the process and the data to back up the decisions that we've made, so even though, even if a narrative gets thrown out there.
Right. Yeah.
It's important to remember also that when the back, the BAC voted, there were only, I believe, two threes, and the rest were fours and fives. And so that's a pretty enthusiastic, and if not overwhelming, support of the bond recommendation itself. And as we know from the meetings, we, the, the committee members are, are their own thinkers, and critical thinkers at that. So I think that's, that was a pretty telling...
And the threes got a chance to share.
And had a chance to share.
There's an open forum just on those few folks that had some concern. Tell either concerns, which was great, so.
Any others before we move on, change topics? Jonathan, thank you for bringing that up.
Wait, I think Adam shared.
Did you, go ahead, Rick, because I, go ahead. I, I, I know, you're going to have to come up, you're going to have to come up and use it.
We can record you.
Come on up, Rick.
Maybe as representative of the committee, the BAC, we didn't have a lot of, we didn't have a 100% consensus on much of anything. There was always a give and a take, and there was always people who were in favor and some against. But I, I think I want to just make it clear to the board here tonight that we were unanimous on the fact that we did not want to go over 138 million. And we spent quite a bit of the time of the last two meetings, really, discussing what we could do to delete some things and, and in order, as you said, to add some critical things, so that they could be included. But what we were unanimous on was the fact that we didn't want to see it go over 138 million, that was the limit.
And the polling backs, backs that up, so.
Well, and, and, yeah, that was one of the reasons that we didn't want to go over that number, so.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Skills USA, we're going to have a presentation, and I think we need to have a motion to authorize out-of-state travel, is that right?
That's why Dr. Barnes is here to, this, this evening. Good luck following that one up, Kirsten.
I'm ready for it. I can sell it.
You should, this should, this shouldn't be new to you, there's been other presentations on it, but I just didn't want to assume that you didn't have all the information before you vote to approve this, so take it away, Dr. Barnes.
I will. Actually, Daniel, can, I think that's the third slide, maybe? Perfect. We got the first one up there.
And you have a clicker right there in front of you that once he hits go...
Even better.
It'll be all yours.
All right, so I'm here to talk about Silverton Career and Technical Education, and our CTSOs, which are career and technical organizations that work throughout this, that's FFA, FBLA, Skills USA, and HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America. From those four groups, it's really the opportunity for our students to show their special skills outside of our own school building, across the state and across the nation. And so, as we talk about bonds and all those different things, this is a place to highlight what our students are doing across the nation and make our town proud of them. And so as we look through this, it says, "We're going to inspire young adults to find a pathway to a purposeful and productive future, and we will accomplish this by offering hands-on skills training, providing real-world, world experience, and creating opportunities for students to expand both their self-reliance and ability to work with others." And we believe that it's through these organizations that we have a great opportunity to do that. And so, our mission with Skills USA, with CTE as a whole, is to find your spark. What makes a kid get involved? What makes them find their passion? What makes them do what they need to do to be themselves? And so, our question as teachers is, how do we connect the right students to the right pathways? And for students, how do we help a student find that spark, that special thing that makes them say like, "I love going to school every day"? Because once we can do that, we haven't made, like, they like math all of a sudden, and they like all the other things that might be hard for them in the past, and so we're really looking for that spark opportunity. And so, CTSOs do that. And so, I'm here today to ask for permission for our groups to travel, but are, have one, I'm just going to quickly go through this. So, Skills USA is one of those organizations, they are unique because they only compete once a year. They show up at a state tournament, if you're sick that day, you didn't get to go. If something goes on, if your aunt's getting married that weekend, you don't get to go. I mean, it's one opportunity for those kids, and we had 11 state champions at this event, which is a really big deal for us. Last year, we had three. And so, 11 state champions representing 23 students. From that 23 students, we have 17 that are going to go and compete at the national competition, sophomore like Rosie. And as we go through these, Cole Perez is going to be our T-shirt designer, his designs on his computer, he did a really cool pine tree with all the things about Silverton inside of it, and Oregon, and just did a great design. You'll see Catherine Howe, who came and spoke to you in April, and she was a state champion last year, she's returning as a two-time state champion, and she really wants to win. So, it will be exciting to see her perform and go out and do her work there. Our TV video production team, again, going in for their second time with Kyla and Michaela, a junior and a sophomore. Our digital cinema, first time we competed in this event, they're making a movie. The judge for the movie is actually the production team that's making the movie, The Chosen, that's made quite a bit of news around the United States lately, and so, the, it's a really big production opportunity, and the students actually have opportunities for both scholarships and for like, money to like, make movies for other people by going to these competitions, so really great opportunity. Olivia Rossborough is going to be our firefighter, first time a female has represented Oregon in a firefighter state competition, or a national competition. Our career pathway showcase with Christina Simone and Haley, underclassmen who are going to go and talk about how CTE has changed what they think and what they do, and what their next purpose is, and how they're going to take that with them. A crime scene investigation, maybe you like CSI shows, they're really popular on TV. Well, Carissa, Samantha, and Bryn are going to solve a crime, and they're going to write the crime scene report up, they're going to collect DNA, they're going to do fingerprinting, they're going to do everything it takes in order to show off those skills that they've learned in forensic, forensics with Mrs. Bay. We'll see our welding fabricators, Henry, David, and Gavin, they're going to build something from scratch in six hours' time, and then be judged on it. And so, you know, it's going to be a really exciting piece. We have 17 of our 23 qualifiers that are going to travel with us. Six students chose not to travel because they were either seniors, or just how it lined up with family plans, graduation pieces that took place, we're all seniors, it just didn't work right. But these 17 are going to go, and so, we leave on Monday, June 19th at 2:00 a.m., we have a big yellow bus picking up us up. We have five teacher coaches that rep, work with these kids, and then we got a grant for one of our, our health services, Mrs. Sheets is going to be going with us, under a grant, so that we can learn more about health services opportunities to compete at a national level. And so, that's a new opportunity that we're going to be able to take. The very next week, we get home on Saturday, and FBLA leaves on Sunday for Atlanta, and they have two students, one adult, going to compete, and Maddie Stolphas was a state champion, entered a social media strategies, and Amelia Broihill is going to represent Oregon as a social media strategist. Two different levels of programs, but kind of going on, and Mrs. Stolphas is going to go because Mr. Craig's brother's getting married that week, so we, we need a subs. So, we'll be going with that. And then, we have yearbook camp, and University of Houston Sound hosts yearbook camp, it's a pretty big deal. We received the CTE Revite Grant last year, which was $125,000. Part of that money pays for our students to go back to camp for two, the second year to be involved with this. We have four students and one teacher that will be involved in this. It includes instructions, competitions. Last year, our students took first place for our size of school, which would be like a 5A school, for Oregon, Washington, Idaho, and Alaska. So, if you haven't seen our yearbook from this year yet, I would invite you, you need to take a gander at it, it's amazing. I mean, it's, it's better than last year, and so we're really excited to see them take that with them and show that off. And then, we have FFA, in our FFA group, we have three students that will be going to the National Leadership Conference. We have a student that's running for state office this year, which is a pretty big deal, and she's going to be running, working her way through that. We have two teachers that will be going with them to help work through all the different things that they'll be working on, and how you testify before Congress, because they're going to go meet the congressmen, congresswomen, learn how to testify, learn how to start advocating for education in that manner. And then, they'll go to Nationals, October 29th through November 5th. We have 10 national qualifiers right now, total of 16 students will travel with two teachers. So, lots of things going on, lots of expenses involved. We work hard to really work on fundraising, getting those taken care of. We're in good shape right now, we're excited about our opportunities to go, and we would like to ask permission for us to be able to travel out of state and have our kids show off their skills, so they can come home and tell their families and their friends and our community what we're up to at Silverton High School.
So if we use the term CTE program, that covers all of those things in our motion?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I mean, it would all be okay, no matter what we say, but I just want to make sure that I'm setting us up well. That was a fantastic presentation.
Yes, it was.
I love seeing those kids and them knowing what they're doing, that's incredible. Thank you so much for your efforts.
So are we, the finances are covered, are we approving expenditures, or, no, I mean, that's all, it's just the, it's just the travel itself, okay?
Yeah, a little fundraising to finish up, but it's the out-of-state travel piece. So, I mean, it's more amazing to me to think that we've raised $35,000 in six weeks' time.
Wow.
But, I mean, that's just from working things and making things work, so.
So asking for no money, all we're asking for is yes.
Yeah.
It's a pretty easy decision.
We can do that.
It is an easy decision. I'm glad, you know what, I mean, while I think it's almost strange that we even have to authorize it...
Yeah.
I'm really glad in a way, because we get to see you, and we get to see the presentation, and what a gift, right? So, so in a lot of ways, I guess I'm grateful, yes.
I was thinking the same thing. Yeah, the policy reads all first time out-of-state travel must have prior board approval, and so I'm assuming that some of this is first time going.
Got it.
Interesting. So somebody needs to make a motion, unless we have any more questions for Dr. Barnes?
A move that we approve, out-of-state travel for the CTE programs this summer.
Second. It's been moved in second, and to approve out-of-state travel for the CTE programs this summer. What's up?
Tom?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Janet?